I wasn't sure how it worked. Yes. Yes.
Good evening, Montgomery City Council is coming to our office. You have the phones, you put them on silent please. And we're going to arrive for an indication. I'll go ask the council staff when you give the indication.
Really, Lord, we thank you so much for the many blessings we're able to see in our families and our communities, but we come to you as a great physician. We ask for healing for all who are sick. We ask for healing and restoration and reinforcement for those who care for the sick. And, Lord, we just pray that you help us to band together and get through this. And as we go into this time of budget, may we be wise in all things, give us wisdom to make prudent decisions for the best interest of our city and our county. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Now would you give the speech, United States flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common sense.
Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
We are all here tonight in Mary's, after night and councilwoman, Lyle, but we have been deaf and dandy as a whole. We have two citizens for, one, Mr. Christopher Ward.
Because you came up to that podium, there you go.
Hi, Howard. So I'm here to get a married bachelor boy scout and just listen and see what the plan is. My truth is from out of Willis, but I am here from Montgomery, and I was just so far ahead of it. So I'll just hear you give them right there.
Very cool. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Kelly. Next is Mr. Cade Jenkins. You stick your name and address.
Cade, you forgot to bring the coffee. Huh? You forgot to bring the coffee.
Yeah, I'm Cade Jenkins. My address is 1489 Lake Mount Pleasant Road, Montgomery, Texas. I don't really have a lot, but there was something that was said about, I guess about six weeks ago at the city council meetings that I just kept thinking about. I don't think that it was wrong, but somebody mentioned about the revitalization about Montgomery, that they were talking about how it's really about what we do to historic Montgomery referencing new shrubs and Bidings and how that's going to bring people to the area. And I think that that's amazing, but I really think that it's the businesses that's going to bring people to the area. I think that what the city does with the revitalization, I think that the shrubs and mites is like the ribbon and the bow and the wrapping paper on the presents. But I really think that we do need to see the value of the businesses, of the faces of the business owners, what they can bring to the area. And two, that I think a lot of this drama around the businesses, a lot of this, the feuds and local businesses fighting over parking spots and just little minute details, I think takes away from the heart of this city and takes away from the potential of what we have to build, what we can build here, what I would like to see built here. So I really just wanted to share my part on that and just say that I hope moving forward that we really can see the value of the businesses. I'm the owner of Willer Love Coffee. I am in a trailer, but I hope that people can see that it doesn't make me any less a business owner and any less an important part of downtown Montgomery, of historic Montgomery. And I wanted to also share that almost every day we have people coming from out of town, from people that are new to the area that come and use us almost like an information booth, asking us where the good restaurants are, where the good shops are, what is there to do, what are the upcoming events. And we get to meet these people, we get to connect with these people, and we get to share the great things about our city. So I just hope that you all can see that too.
Thank you. Consider agenda matters related to the approval of August 10, 2021 regular meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion that we accept those as presented.
Second?
Motion has been made and seconded that we accept. The minutes at three minute. The motion is open for debatable, amendable, open for discussion. There's no further discussion. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I have motion carried. We accept the minutes of approval of August 10 regular meeting. Number two, consideration and acceptance of 2021 no revenue tax rate and voter approval tax rate.
This item is properly acknowledged with the no revenue tax rate, voter approval tax rate for 2021, the no revenue rate at the time. Here's our second for a regular valuation, and the voter approval tax rate is .5231 for a regular valuation. And Ann Gray is here, the county's tax assessor collector, to explain these and take any questions from council on the motion as presented.
Good afternoon. It's great to be with you this afternoon. As Richard said, I'm T.D. McGray, Montgomery County Tax Assessor Collector. With me is my chief deputy, Kim Rowe. And I just gave out, Kim, just needed you a little comparison of the tax rate, comparing it to that of revenues that was raised from last year's tax rate and last year's values. Looking at for 2021, your average home taxable value, this is after the 20% homestead that you all have granted, is $207,411. The total taxable value for the city this year is $343,547,833. And you picked up $16.7 million in new improvement value this year over last year. As Richard said, your no new revenue rate is .3587 per $100. And based on the no new revenue rate with this year's taxable value, that would generate $1.2 million in levy. It's a revenue increase of $13,974 over the 2020, which is a 1.14% increase. Your current rate of 40 cents would generate $1.3 million in revenue, a revenue increase of $155,859, a 12.79% increase. And then it goes on down to your voter approval rate of .5231. And then I show, just for your reference, the homestead exemption that you approved for the 2021 tax year, that depending on how you want to look at it, the value lost to the city or the value savings to the taxpayers within the city was $21,618,42. And that's the value. If you convert that over into dollars, that's savings to the taxpayers of $86,472. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
So in theory, we're not losing any money year over year, even though we gave a 20% homestead exemption because we've seen such an increase in property value or construction in our city.
That is correct. And just to note, the city of Montgomery has ran the maximum homestead exemption that you were eligible to by statute grant, which is the 20%.
What actions required on this, Richard?
Let's do accept, to accept the rate as presented for both the revenue and voter approval rate.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, then I'll make the motion.
Are there other questions, council?
No.
Okay, yeah, I make the motion to accept the 2021 no new revenue tax rate and voter approval tax rate as presented.
Second?
Motion has been made and seconded that we accept the no new revenue tax rate and voter approval tax rate for 2021. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same time? I have it. Okay, we, no new revenue tax rate and voter approval tax rate for 2021. All right, number?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Number three. Consider and discuss the tax rate needed to fund the 2021 fiscal year budget for maintenance and operations and debt service. Agenda four, consider vote on proposed tax rate for 2021. Consider and determine the tax rate needed to fund the city budget for the fiscal year 2021, 2022. Disagree to no new revenue tax and schedule a public hearing for September 7, 7, 2021.
Items three, four, and five, as you read them all off, they're all interconnected and we process one at a time. The procedures rated to the tax rate adoption have changed in recent years. The city's draft budget has been repaired by staff keeping the tax rate at .4000 for a regular valuation, which is the same rate the city has had over the years and has been consistent with what has been discussed during those years. This rate does not cause the city to receive additional revenue. It does cause the city to receive additional revenue related to property value increases, which is then available for infrastructure work needed for the growing community. This proposed split for property taxes is .2588 for maintenance and operations and .1412 for INS, which is the investment incentive active debt service. This is a decrease of .217 for maintenance and operations with that same amount going to investment sinking, and that's due to the increased need of property tax revenue paid towards the INS rate for coming year. Last year, the city council decided to use $361,000 in surplus funds that was available in debt service fund to pay towards the annual debt service rate. This year's budget proposes to use $136,000 of remaining and $196,000 in surplus funds that are in the debt service fund to help offset the need for property taxes to pay those costs this year, which is similar to what council chose to do last year, using surplus funds for the INS rate. So let's put forward for staff, agenda item three is the special point, agenda item four is the adoption of the proposed tax rate for 2021 with staff recommendation at .4000 for a regular valuation. Whatever rate the council picks here tonight, it cannot go higher rate than that. If you want to take this rate, it can also go with a lower rate if through the talks to the budget workshop, it's determined that a different rate is necessary or acceptable based on the council's work to fund the full budget after it reviews and works through staff recommendation, that becomes a doable item as well. Our city attorney is much more versed that the nuances of the law related to this. If there's specific questions, it's more likely, he will answer them here myself.
Okay. That's what I referred to. You have something you'd like to add? You had that look?
No.
Okay. Okay. All right. Okay, good, okay. So as far as this agenda goes now, it's whatever we decide tonight could change based off our meeting on Thursday, is what you're saying?
Right. The way the both tax setting and the budget creation work, they're interconnected and they lead into each other, although they're, in theory, different processes, they work closely together. You know, it's almost a chicken and the egg argument. You have to have, you have to know what you're going to spend to have a tax rate, you have to have a tax rate to know what you're going to generate to know what to spend. And so this process allows that you have a proposal for both, just plus the draft budget. We go through the budget workshop, we work through all the budget items, then you know which we need. The last item on the agenda at the budget workshop is to discuss the tax rate necessary to fund it. You bring those items back at the meeting, which September 14 for the city council, to adopt both. You must by law adopt the budget first, and then you adopt the tax rate to fund both. So this is the, this is what the city has done for past several years. And, you know.
Okay.
So any other questions on that?
No, that's all.
I know you said chicken or egg, but I'm going to say it again because I sent it to you in an email. It just seems counterintuitive to me to say, let's just throw a percentage out there and then, oh, let's spend all of this so that we can, say, rationalize keeping that percentage. I would rather set a budget first and then say, we need this amount to fund that budget because right now we're just throwing percentages out and saying, hey, taxpayers, throw us your money, with no budget behind it. We have no, there's, and I don't, I'm not, no, you said this is the way it's been done forever. I'm just saying, chicken or egg? This doesn't make sense to me.
I was going to say, what makes sense to me is maybe that we meet Thursday, and then this comes back to the next council meeting to decide this.
He did tell me this comes back, this is a preliminary.
Yeah.
But still.
This is a proposed amount.
Yeah.
This is not an adopted amount. As I said earlier, whatever you select as a proposed number to decide, you're not going higher than that number. You can go lower than that number.
Sure.
And it's like, it's a working number. Like I said, take it into the workshop. You work through what the budgetary needs out of the city through, you go through every account, you go through all the line items. The last item we discussed is the tax rate needed to fund the items. And so that, you know, that's where you work all, as I said, the sausage job. You get down with that line, you know, get through the budget, the council determines there's a need for a lower tax rate, you have people to adopt it based on the information we have. If there, you know, if there's a need to keep at that number, you have backup for that right there as well.
We already anticipate, we already know it's a conservative budget that we're looking at at this time for the uncertainty inflationary times. We've got plenty of wiggle room. Forty seems reasonable. If it was reasonable to pass, there's no reason for me to think it's not a good starting point at least. And if we can only go down from there, it's not something that's going to concern taxpayers.
Yeah, no, I mean, I know we can change it in the meeting, it's just some kind of backwards.
It does seem a little bit, but.
Just what my brain works.
I don't disagree with you that it seems to be a mixed, counterintuitive process.
It's not going to hurt you, I'm saying this. Okay. What do you need from us as far as this goes?
Agenda item four, we had discussion for three, so agenda item four is consider a vote on proposed tax rate for 2021. That must be a roll call vote by name and vote.
Okay.
And as I said, the staff recommendation is .4000 per $100 valuation.
How do you roll call? Do you, your roll call vote?
Yeah, the one.
Okay. So make a motion first. I can make the motion to accept the adoption, recommend adopting the rate. So you say we're not adopting the rate yet.
You're adopting the proposed tax rate. You use the word proposed in there.
I didn't see the word proposed. It just says recommends adopting a rate of .4. So that's why.
The proposed rate.
Okay, because I like to make a motion to adopt the proposed rate of .4000 per $100 with .2588 for INO and .1412 for INS. Somebody second that.
Can we second? I'll second it.
Now I got a roll call.
Motion has been moved and seconded that we accept the adopted proposed tax rate for 2021 with a roll call vote of .4000 of 100 and .2588 for MOA and .1412 for INS. The motion is open for discussion.
I make a motion that we amend that to say that this is not just proposed, but that it is pending the budget reviews later this week.
No problem with that.
This did really stay in the motion.
I do want to make sure that we know that we're revisiting this right after we have budget stuff because.
Right. It's already been noticed that this will come back on the September 14 agenda for actual official action. So there's no problem with that.
Motion has been adjusted to say that it is pending. Meeting is coming.
Is there a second to be amended?
I second that.
All those in favor?
Do we need to roll call this?
Roll call after we call.
You go call it one time or is it supposed to say?
Mr. Kim?
Aye.
Mr. Judy?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
And TJ? Aye.
The agenda item five, which we already announced is your next item. You have to consider that the proposed tax rate approved just a moment ago is above the no new revenue rate. We call for a public hearing to be scheduled on September 7, 2021. At 6:00 p.m., it will be at this location near this room, 10101, over.
Okay, the previous motion carried? You need to, you have all that? Yeah. There you go. Now, number five.
Is that what I just said?
Yes, now what you just said. Got it.
So because our tax rate is .0, .4000, which is above the .358 no new revenue, we have to have a public hearing, correct?
Correct.
Just clarifying.
Correct.
Very cool. I can make some motion that we.
Schedule a public hearing.
Schedule a public hearing to be held for September 7, 2021.
I second it.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded that we have it. Schedule a public hearing September 7, 2021. All those in favor?
Mayor Fratton, can I ask that we state the time and location of the public hearing, please, with the record?
September 7, 2021, at 6 o'clock?
At City Hall.
At City Hall. I'll say it again, okay? How about a quick motion that we hold a public hearing to be scheduled for September 7, 2021 at City Hall, 6:00 p.m. Amen.
Second?
All right, second.
You second it now.
I'll second.
Okay, move and seconded that we have a call for public hearing to be scheduled September 7, 2021, 6 o'clock, City Hall. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? I have it. Number four. Consider a vote on proposed tax rate for 2021.
You've done that. We've done three, four, five, yes, so going ahead to six.
Number six. Considering the possible action regarding approval of change order. Number two is typically of acceptance for the Stewart Creek wastewater treatment plant lift station relocation project.
The city's attorney has prepared a memo that has it attached to this item, and first we'll talk to the city to get that.
In your packet, it's on page 29, I received a memo from last describing this. This is normally considered another type item, but just based on this project and the time that somebody else talked about it, we wanted to discuss it in a regular agenda. So what this is, is for the lift station treatment project, which was the extension from late September of 2020. This is the one where the contractor was substantially late, so there's a lot of back and forth that's been had. So this is a final change order to adjust the contract amount based on settlement per damages as well as the initial chaos that weren't used. So the total decrease in the contract amount is by $52,367.72, which takes the total contract from $1,094,300 to $1,044,932.28. So what's upon you tonight is approval of that negative change order. It's about 4.7%, 4.8% decrease to the contract value as well as distributive acceptance. Again, the timeline on this is weird since the extension complete is September 2020. You typically see this right after, but since you were going through negotiations up until the past, you know, two months, this document hasn't been to you. So what this does is says that you're accepting the project, it is restated to the one-year warranty period, but it's also on standard completion, is set up September 17, 2021. So here in the next few weeks, we have a one-year warranty inspection on that project. Timeline here, same stuff as you always go through, but the timeline's a little bit. So I can get any questions you have on this.
Richard, remind me if this aligns up with what we had discussed previously on this? Like, is it, did we get the money that we wanted because of the delays?
It does. With what had been previously discussed in.
I knew it was ballpark similar.
It falls in line with that. And before, we actually had enough money that we wrote a check, it was just less than the amount that we originally wanted. And before we let that check through City Hall, we verified with all the points of contact.
I'll make a motion that we accept this agenda item as presented.
I second.
Motion has been made that we accept the agenda item as presented. Motion is open for debatable, open for discussion. No discussion, all those in favor to approve the change order? Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? I have it. Motion carried. We accept the change order number two for Stewart Creek wastewater plant lift station relocation project and accept sanitary sewer, public infrastructure. Item number seven. Consideration of possible action regarding an engagement letter from Bell Harris Pickett for annual audit for fiscal year ending September 30, 2021 and September 30, 2022.
Bell Harris Pickett has done the city's audits the last four years, and it's on a four-year engagement letter. They recently provided us a new engagement letter for another two years. The increase of cost was, I felt, significant, a 35% increase. What I'd like to do is ask the council to reject this letter and direct me to go out for request for qualifications to bring back for the water.
Is there a reason why they're so much higher this year from previous?
What we discussed with them, what they said was that they were losing money and needed that increase based on changes. I, to me, it didn't quite sound right, especially because this last audit was done almost entirely remotely with, you know, with us emailing all sorts of documents and records and rather than then coming out here in City Hall and looking through some of the documents. Also, the amount they said they need to break even in the last year was actually a greater amount than what the engagement letter said, so. And as I said before, sometimes it's good to just see what else is on the market with consultants. And I think, given the 35% price increase, I think that's the time for it.
Is this going to press you for time to meet deadlines and try to find a new auditor?
It would press us a little bit, but there's enough time to get this done.
So what are you suggesting? You're bringing us back one person that you recommend? You're sending it out for bid for how long?
We issue RFQs, it'll be copied off of RFQs that have been done during the past, and we'll bring numbers back and give them to council to make a selection.
Okay. Well, then I'll make a motion to, to ask you, Richard, to go out and find us, or at least bring back three?
Through an RFQ process.
Three, yeah, through your proposals through RFQ. Second?
Just second? Motion has been made, moved and seconded that we direct a city administrator to begin a request proposal for audit, and then we'll bring back three, three bids, so next week.
Do we need to have some kind of language in there to deny this? Or no, because we're sending out for bids, we're, because that's what you're asking us first to deny?
It can be considered unaccounted denied because it's not accepted.
Motion is on. Pay for the motion?
Yeah, I'm ready for you to call it.
Yeah.
Rick?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? I have carried. Motion carries. So that we, with the direct city administrator to direct a request for three bid proposed for audit and to bring back to the council. Item number eight. Presentation and discussion of development concept for Porta Farm, a 23-acre single-family residential development by Waterstorm Development Group LLC.
Waterstorm Development Group LLC, which is not connected or related to the Waterstorm subdivision of the city, is proposing residential development on the north side of the city of Jersey Mountain, which has been provided. The developer has experience for both affordable and high-end housing, would like to know from the city council what they might like us to see, that the city council feels might best serve the needs of the city. A presentation is attached to the packet, and the developer is here immediately to discuss this item. Additionally, the developer intends to create a public improvement district to serve as a reimbursement for the infrastructure cost. The city has one existing bid for Summit Business Park on 1097. Bids are special purpose visitors, similar to most with a few notable individuals. Bids are special purpose visitors, similar to mugs, with a few notable differences. While most can sell bonds to finance infrastructure improvements, bids also levy special assessments, and they end when the bonds are repaid. Most of the property taxes and their political updates that continue and vacant continue beyond the life of the bonds.
Thank you.
If we start by introducing myself, my name is...
Good evening, Council. My name is Charles Marchmet, and I am the president of Waterstone Development Group. We build communities from as far south as Angleton up to Huntsville, and from the College Station area over to Dayton, Liberty. Many years ago, I built nothing but very exclusive, very high-end communities. And retired. And then a gentleman came to me and explained that there was a dramatic need for affordable housing in the entirety of the country. But unfortunately, there's some areas that the cost had gotten so high that it's impossible to ever go back. A city that you didn't say that about is, I had it a second ago, Mount Belvue. There is not a citizen employee of Mount Belvue unless they live there forever. You can't go get a job as a school teacher. You can't go get a job as a police officer and live inside of the city limits or the media-sounding areas, because it's just too expensive. And this is an absolutely gorgeous town. I was telling a couple of people when I was a younger man, we used to come through here. It was always a fun stop. But I see that you could very easily become an area that is full of very exclusive, very wealthy homes, but nothing for the people who run the city, nothing for the citizens that are teachers, are firefighters. And having them with roots in the community is obviously better. Mrs. Peterson, my fifth grade teacher, lived in the little town that I grew up in, and therefore, she lived there forever, and she lived there till the day she died. And I think that's something that makes for a better teacher. That's the background. What we located was a 23-acre parcel of this indoor project, a portfolio, that is actually much smaller than what we wanted. There was an additional 43 acres to the north, and we still have hopes of getting that. Unfortunately, that homeowner or that property owner may be ill. And so we haven't... the realtor that represents her has not been able to get over. But our long-term goal is, since this was in the city limits, build this as a first step, and then ask you to allow us to annex the next part in. And our goal, a hearth of what I told you, we wanted to build 170, 175,000 of homes. With the cost of materials that have increased over the last year, year and a half, that exact same home today sells for 208,000. To me, that's perhaps affordable, because most people can afford it, but it's fast approaching if one of them isn't. And one of the keys to affordable housing is we need to reduce the lot width from 70, 80 feet down to around 50. You're not going to see me coming in, saying 40s and 35s, that a lot of my brother are so hot to trot on, because I think it makes too small a home, because the family can't live in it. But at a 50-foot lot, we still have room for a 38-foot lot of home on it. We can do homes in this community with average, I'm sorry, not average, that would range from 1,400 to 2,200 square feet. So we're not talking about tiny little houses. A lot of our citizens today prefer not to spend all day Saturday weed eating and mowing. But I do find that because these yards are smaller, we have a community oriented petting shoot. And I can tell you personally, my wife and I drove through there two weeks ago on a Saturday morning on our way to the market. And it was like two kids in a car, because you have all these families out in the front yards, and they were doing all the things that used to be happening when I was a kid. You know, the kids were playing, the older son was helping with some of the weed eating, but everywhere up and down the street, they were taking care of their homes. We're very strict on the idea of deed restrictions. And our deed restrictions have a clause that allows, but does not require, the city to enforce them. I say that because we all know the legislature keeps taking power from cities. And we can have deed restrictions. One of my favorites is you can only park on the street for a certain number of hours. Now, that's 72 hours generally. The idea is if you have a friend who comes over and they're spending the weekend with you, maybe they can't fit in parking your garage. But we want people to park in their garages, because it's safer. We have another deed restriction that you can't change the oil in your front yard. Well, the truth is, if they got out there and just changed the oil in their car, nobody would ever catch it, nobody would ever care. The idea is we don't want someone dismantling the car. And so these are the common sense approaches we take to this. What we're asking Council is to tell us if you would like to see a, you know, we would like to do 50 by 130 lots. We understand that you have a compensating ordinance. And that compensation space, we don't have in the plan that we've designed. It would cause the lots to end up being around 70-foot wide to future ordinances. And at 70-foot, our home price minimum would go closer to 260, 265. And we think that's too high. So we're looking for direction. The other thing we can do, we also build with Toll Brothers. So there's some very expensive homes that could also come in. But I think there's a lot of expensive homes in your area that are coming. So we'd like to be the people who create nice, attractive neighborhoods, brick fronts. But by allowing us to have a little smaller lot format, we'll be able to provide an affordable house. We do the underground utilities, everything that everybody else would do. So it's not a matter of trying to cut every corner. And the reason we use the PIT mechanism is that public bond money is a lot cheaper than my interest as a developer commercially. And we can spread those payments out over 30 years with the homeowner. And one of the things that I really like about PITS, and don't get me wrong, I might come in some day and say, we really need a mud in the project. But if you're not building around sewer plant, and you don't have massive lift stations, and you don't have huge drainage areas, muds are dangerous. Because after I form them, a citizen committee takes them over, and 15 years later, they might decide they need a giant statue in front of the subdivision. And they're empowered to spend that money and just raise their rates. And I hate losing control of that. A PIT, as your city administrator so eloquently said, is for a set number of days, a set number of hours, and a set number of years. And it's for a set amount of money. It doesn't go up and down. And in fact, one could argue that if your home value continues to appreciate over the years, and your payment stays the same, that your effective tax rate, and I call it tax because it's the only term that really makes sense to me, but the percentage continues to go down, because it's fixed. It doesn't go up, as where a mud tax continues going up. If it's a 1.25% mud tax, as your property value goes up, the amount of taxes you're paying a year goes up. And a PIT, it's in verse, it gets less, because you're fixed. The day you buy that house, you know that you have a maximum exposure of X amount of dollars. So our purpose denied was to, we've met with your assistant city administrator, we've met with your city engineer, and we wanted to see what Council thought of the concept of going with smaller lots, and whether they thought affordable homes or a higher end home, and give a little direction for me.
Well, you have my full support. You just described me, lifelong teacher. You look at different areas to go in, you work hard all your life, but you're never going to be at that 300,000. But what I'm looking at here is, I mean, however you divide that lot up, you get 110 homes in a given space. If they look anything like page 55, they're going to be very similar to what's around Cedar Break Park. Very attractive looking is more what I'm concerned about, attractive and maintained. The issues you're talking about as far as parking in the driveway just going to mine, just come out west, and you'll see those very problems. And we could write citations, sorry. We could write citations every day, but we shouldn't do it, because driveways are smaller. That's the very house that I had to afford. It's the only way we could be there. So my gut feeling is, when you get ready to build, it's going to be at least 215. But by comparison to $500,000 homes in the Kemmerer project, 400 of those rascals, not to mention the 300-plus average of the 199.
517.
Is it 517?
Kemmerer.
You went and counted?
No, that's all paid for, 517.
Awesome. Even more so. So you have my full support on this. And a PIT makes far more sense than the mud district.
So Dave, question for you, since he spoke to you. What do you see as the biggest hurdle for him getting around the lot width variance? Because clearly, we have a city ordinance for 70-foot lot width variance, and that has always been our hurdle to getting starter homes inside the city limits.
That's, you know, so when we look at, you know, what our ordinance is, and, you know, having a layout always look at ordinances, especially when it comes to subdivision and your development ordinances, is they should be a minimum standard, but they are not possible, right? You know, a variance, if it makes sense, is not a bad thing. A variance, just because no one wants to do it, starts to run into other problems. The biggest hurdle, you know, here in this layout, and as Charles mentioned, our ordinance requires when we build less than a 9,000-square foot lot, our ordinance requires a one-to-one offset of compensating open space. So meaning that if you want to build, you know, when you have 10 lots, if you're only building 8,000 square foot lots, you're a thousand foot less on each of those. Then you've got to go find 10,000 square feet of compensating open space. You know, it can be, you know, natural, it can be a form of park. In this case, that would, you know, you'd be looking at a couple of variances on this type of, you know, on this type of project that was going to propose no compensating open space. You would want, or there would be, I know the question from the council, a variance on the lot width, the lot size, and the compensating open space. So you're talking about one thing, but there's three, fifteen pieces, you know, that go into, so.
So I will tell you over and over and over again that I'm sure everybody has heard me saying that the biggest deficit that we have as a city is that we do not have a starter home. We just don't. We take and we pay employees left and right from every store in town, and these people can't afford to live here. And they take money that is paid out here, and they leave our city with it, and they don't spend it here, and they don't live here, and it's a huge issue. And so I am a huge advocate that you do the starter homes, and definitely do away with the big $500,000 homes. I feel like we've got enough of those all over the place. A PIT is a great idea, because you're right, it does end at a point, and then the people are free to fall into the city. I just worry about what your hurdles look like getting past the city ordinances, and what that looks like for you.
Dave, is there another type of housing unit that would request a variance there, such as maybe townhomes or duplex, triplex-type building projects?
Certainly that would, you know, again, could require a variance, because it would, you know, you would, at that point then, you would be looking at your building lots. You know, you would, kind of in addition to the other three variances, you'd then be looking at building lot variance.
So if we get clients later on requesting the same type of variance, then they're asking us to do it on the basis of their investments, thereby prohibiting people who would like to do more than just rent, finally owning a home that they'll be likely to take care of. So, I mean, we've kind of, we've kind of talked about this before, about getting too many stacked-on-top rental units and things of that nature. Great for the investor. But we have people we need to take care of here in the city that we need to live, work, and play in this city. And we've just got, our whole workforce comes from the outside. And it's just, it's just a huge plus for me.
I hear what you're saying there, Byron. And one thing about the Hills and Town Creek, where you live and where I'm building a home now too, is that the reality is, we don't want to have control over investors wanting to come in and buy up all the houses in these neighborhoods. Because that's what you've got in Hills and Town Creek. Half the houses in there were bought by investors and turned into rental houses.
That's, that's true.
You've got a lot of rental houses in there regardless, so how can we control that? That's my concern, is that we build a nice neighborhood like this, skinny houses, skinny lots, and somebody with, you know, all the money comes in and buys half the neighborhood. Next thing you know, you've got renters everywhere. It's nothing wrong with renters, I rent now, okay? But the controls are going to be different, obviously, between a rental and private ownership and actually owning a house. How do we control that?
You said deed restrictions, though, like, so they would have subdivision deed restrictions?
We have...
Yeah, I get it.
Yeah.
We have not had the problem in the past that we're seeing in the last 12 months. And in, I don't want to say retaliation for that, but in trying to resolve it, we changed some of our language in our deed restrictions. We now prohibit any form of short-term rental. We require a minimum of one year. That gets us out of the person perhaps wanting to open an Airbnb, which sounds like a great idea, and it works great until you get fraternity kids. My father rented a beach house in Galveston when I was young. I don't think the neighbors on either side were very pleased. An entire summer, they had to endure me and my friends. And it's the lesson I've remembered. Another thing that we did is we changed it so that no landlord, regardless of whether they own one unit or 10 units, can put a sign on the property. And the reason that becomes effective is, a lot of landlords, these big corporate landlords, they look at those restrictions, and when they see the fact that they can't Airbnb it, they see that it's got to be a minimum of one year, not a six-month lease, when they see that they can't advertise it on-site, when they see that there's a $150 rental application, and that they have to do a criminal background check to ensure the person has never had a sex offender or a drug dealer charge. And we make sure that they do, oh, those are the two, I'm sorry. It's two different checks, but those are the two things they have to check. Most of the landlords do not want, the commercial landlords, don't want to go through those steps. They feel that that could trip them up legally. And for example, if we could prove that they rented to somebody and they hadn't done that background check, we could expose them to plenty, a lawsuit from the POA standpoint. So those are really the four or five items that we put in in an effort to discourage investors coming in, buying the houses, and we still haven't accomplished anything. The person who we want to be taken care of and have a house is still just renting. They're just renting a house instead of a apartment. And on the compensating space issue, we had originally, as I mentioned, had that additional acreage that went north, and there was a large creek on the east side of that property. And we had always anticipated that that creek would compensate us for whatever kinds of space. We'd come out, we'd do some walking trails. And we still have hopes of getting that at some point in time. But again, I can't depend on whether, if she is ill, whether her heirs leave and sell to us.
Well, there's another question I have, because one of the things you say in the presentation, it talks about the amenities, that lists walking trails and all these great things, which is what we want here, obviously, with the current 20, that's 23 acres, right?
Yes.
There's no room for any of that stuff in that 23 acres, is there?
We're going to have some of the, it's very corny to some people, very important to me, to have the community gardens, raised-fed gardens, because I don't know how many children don't know that tomato comes from a plant.
Right.
Really?
My wife and I were recently in Colorado, they've got a giant sign that says, "Milk Plant." Well, no wonder the kids don't know it comes from a cow, because it's got a giant sign that says it comes from a plant. So we think that some of the things can be included. Fortunately, we'll be putting in the dry, the sidewalks, and a lot of people use those for walking around. And since we keep the cars out of the streets, that also works out where we see a lot of people walking, because I think walking's going to keep our population alive. But some of the things that we really wanted, like around the intention ponds, and wherever we can stick little things like butterfly gardens and things like that. One, horseshoes. We don't have room for a soccer field here, but we do have room for horseshoes. And anything to hit the kids where they're outside. My favorite sign is a billboard that says, "Interactive gaming device," and it has a fishing pole, as opposed to pits.
Right. As of right now, the walking shows will be... Right. As of right now, the walking trails will be the sidewalk.
As of right now, they will be the sidewalk.
Okay. I understand. Um, the second thing I was asked, as far as the sidewalks, and this is, right, just out of curiosity, how can you control people blocking the sidewalks, but that's another thing about Hills and Town Creek. Great sidewalks, but you can't get past them because they're all blocked by cars. Is that something you all control? And how do you?
We have not had that problem yet.
Wow.
Generally speaking, when we put in a twenty-five-foot setback and we place the garage, uh, slightly depressed from the front, there's generally enough room. Uh, we have a project going in Huntsville, uh, that's just gonna start construction, and I guess we're going to see whether that still holds true. Because that is a town that they will have more than two cars. They might have three or four because of the nature of the population of Huntsville.
Sure.
So, uh, we haven't experienced it yet, but I do think it will. And at that point, we may have to look at additional deed restrictions, but it is a, a problem. The whole idea of the sidewalk is that you can walk down and not dodge all the cars.
Gotcha. Well, you know, I do know some of the owners of the property on the corner there that might be able to make a deal on it. Compensating bringing space. Now, the reality is, I would be interested to see what, what, what ends up happening with the forty acres north of you. That would be fantastic if we just had an idea. I mean, honestly, there's no clue at all what's gonna happen with that right now, right? The owner is probably not doing so well right now.
The broker, the broker that, uh, when we originally did this about five months ago, uh, we were trying to sign both contracts at the same time.
Okay.
The broker wasn't able to get a hold of her. We anticipated that being a short term. Uh, about a month and a half after that, he came and he said, as far as he's concerned, he's lost complete contact with her and had no idea what was wrong, and asked me if I wanted to cancel the original contract because we could no longer build the whole project. And our goal was to try to get in here and find out what council's opinion would be. We only have the twenty-three, uh, under contract. We would love to have the whole, uh, my original goal was to keep going down that street and keep picking up other property, but that may never happen. All I can tell you from today.
I got you.
TJ, what are your thoughts? This is, what are your thoughts on this? This is your neck of the woods over there, and not just that, but I notice he's got a exit going right out to ten ninety-seven, right there by all our friends' houses that we already have problems with speeders.
Are you gonna have a main entrance off of ten ninety-seven?
I'm sorry, sir?
Are you gonna have an entrance off of ten ninety-seven also?
We're proposing it, and we have not yet talked to the city about that, but that's tough. Uh, if it's, if it's a problem, then we would certainly withdraw that. We originally wanted to go straight east over to that road that, uh, is about another six hundred feet east. But there's, we.
Terminal Road?
I believe so. Summit Business Park for us, where we're trying to get to, but we don't have a right of way through there. Uh, so the ten ninety-seven exit was an attempt to show the council that we wanted to have multiple entrances. If that turns out to be more of a detriment than a asset, we certainly wouldn't wanna do it. I don't wanna put anybody where they're pulling out and taking, you know, take a chance every day, figuring.
That goes to the intersection, for sure. We've had a big talk about this. I know that's a proposed exit right there. That's, that's probably not a good spot.
But if you got it to Summit Business Park, that would line it up with Buffalo Springs, and then if we got to a point of having a stoplight there, like we discussed two weeks ago, that, that would be more logical.
Unfortunately, there's interdepartmental property owners.
Right.
And, uh, I don't have condemnation.
Well, it doesn't look like you need action from us, correct? You just wanted dialogue?
It's just a discussion so that you can, you can step and gauge the interest of council before going any farther, because if there was no interest from council to go that way, there'd be no point to dealing.
Right.
So we, we can get that back.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a public seat on that or no?
It's fine.
Item number nine is, uh, "Perpetual discretion and discretion on relocation of historic home to the Oaks Montgomery property located at two oh two Prairie Street by Miles Morris."
Okay, this information is brought to us by Miles Morris, owner of, uh, no, very nice. Uh, owner of the Oaks Montgomery, who contacted the city to discuss the relocation of his historic home to his property, two oh two Prairie Street. I'll go ahead and let him think about the three conditions already provided. Uh, this is also not an action item. If it's something that council or council staff to look more, look into, then we will do that, or something will fall in the back of the council.
So I had lunch one day with a lot of high busters from the race team. I said, "I've got somebody I wanna introduce you to." So we introduced me to this guy, and he was telling me that he has this old house that was originally here in downtown Montgomery. And he started telling me the history of this original building is conflicting. I didn't see it until two forty or fifteen sixty. Uh, I'm not sure which was the light of it, but the location of it was consisted home to three hundred Prairie Street, which is where the Hodge Hodge Lodge is. And they had, uh, I guess at some point in time, this residence was partially, maybe like on my property. Not exactly sure. So also, yeah, I'm interested, I'm interested in the history, obviously, I don't, uh, uh, the others. Doesn't mention the same, what is it? So I go out and look at this property, and he said, "Well, I'm going, this is the house that was in the movie Power." You know, I'm not sure if y'all are familiar with that property. I said, "Okay, I've never seen the movie, I'm gonna have to look at it." So I took a look at this house, and I'm like, "Wow, okay, this is pretty cool." So I'm thinking, what is, what are y'all trying to accomplish? So they sold the property where this house is sitting, but the owner who just bought the land doesn't own that house. So it was, uh, so, you know, they were thinking about probably tearing down this house on the, oh, no, 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 no. So I have obviously room on our property, and so I looked at the footprint of this home, and I think they, do you have pictures of this house that you wanna show?
I don't have one to show on here, but they do have in the past.
Okay, so I've got the picture of what the house looks like. Uh, I have, I have moved a house before. I moved about like an eight hundred square foot house. The footprint of this house is just shot two thousand square feet. And I'm like, "Yeah, this is gonna be, uh, this is gonna be a challenge." So I came over here another day, went up to the bridge, and I told him what was going on. I think number one, who the city of Montgomery? This, this is where we also store homes. That was part of the history of Montgomery. And I think if we can somehow get it back here to Montgomery, that's people's city. Uh, I was heading my house open for, uh, the city home tours for the kids wanting to build separate projects. Uh, my intent is just to have a letter home sitting on that property. I'll be the same thing as I always have to be, I'll just have it up. Uh, logistically, I'm here to seek out, say, "Hey, is this your district? Can I move this property onto the property that I currently have until two first? If y'all say yes, then I'm gonna do the diligence on trying to figure out how they're moving to get it back to the city."
One of the issues there is that Mr. Morris currently has a planning development district with the city, which only allows the existing structure to be there. That is something that would have to be pre-built in order to allow this to happen. But it's one of the reasons why we wanted to get you to receive us from the council before we proceeded with any further direction of the staff.
Couple of questions for me. What, what, what proof do we have that this was the original house that was here before all that stuff?
It's registered at the store site.
It is, okay.
And based on the registration of it, and the family who owns it has the history. So like, for instance, when I bought the property of the others, it comes with all the documentation history of that property. So I can go back to judge on any of our data, so I was like, "Okay, well, here's all the information, you know." And all the owners, et cetera, well, supposedly, they have the information of this house. Uh, and I think of some of the residents who I have talked to, my Martin times, I'm here, these little guys who are in this room talking, they all know this property through their family. And so just from what I've told, it is what it is. I mean, it is, exactly as described.
Interesting. I might have to find out how much it would, um, cost to move, that, before we can even consider anything, obviously, but.
Right. So the first thing is get your office permission, and if y'all say yes, that's kind of a step. So I'm anticipating it costs between twenty, fifty, a hundred thousand.
That's a lot of money to ask for right now, that's for sure, you know?
Well, yeah, I'm not asking for all that.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I know, I know, but.
Uh, but, so, uh, I was actually approached about having trees down from my, and so I, I would sue y'all for a load of my property where it's located, where Hodge Hodge is. So between the two properties, I thought, before we lost, we had to drive, I was just gonna say, I lost some of the big old trees over there. Sorry for that. Uh, but there is, uh, probably some trees that do need to get removed. That's not a problem. I think the location of where I want to let, you know, put it, it's gonna be sort of like, we talked about building lines from a previous guest, but it'd probably be right up, you know, square with the current property that I currently have, thirty straight back. Uh, to bring it onto the property, I'll have to actually go through the back of the property. There's no way to come through the driveway. So I'm gonna have to leave a couple of trees, uh, between my property and the school to be able to bring those, uh, bring that house down.
And again, this is just to gauge whether council would be interested in us looking more into this. Uh, anything with this is going to have to go through planning and zoning commission or area council. We have to modify the planning and development district. And, uh, and, you know, those are, those have to take place first, if council even wants us to get to this.
Personally, I'd be opposed to spending the money, just because we have so many infrastructure needs right now. Um, but as far as history goes, you know, Montgomery's huge for history. So I don't, I feel like this is outside of my pay grade.
Well, I was gonna say, the reason why I asked about the, the house and the papers and stuff, 'cause, I mean, I love the stories and things like this. I grew up in a small town called Mandeville, Texas, way south of here. And, uh, there's a little white house down there in Mandeville, Texas, that I grew up being told that that was the house they filled powder in. So, I, I rent the powder house, and I'm a big store of the powder house, others know, you know? So, that's why I was asking about the history, anyway.
I haven't seen movies, so I have no knowledge. Other than, uh, and Carol's here. I think this would be a good question to ask Carol. Carol would be more knowledgeable about it than I probably myself, or maybe you guys. I don't know. Uh, but, uh, I would not, uh, if it was not as described, probably not any interest. But if it was really part of the city and the government's history, I'm big for history, obviously. Uh, I think it'd be a good list.
Yeah. That's it for now, right? We, what do you need from us to say?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, we're interested to hear more, I mean, that's all I can say now.
If, uh, if council wants to have staff continue to talk to Mr. Morris, because he finds out more costs, then we can come back and tell him.
Yeah, I think that's right, man. Yeah, awesome. Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Item number two, "Consideration and potential actual regarding purchase of three mobile traffic control and messaging signs from all traffic solutions."
If this item is tabled at the meeting of August tenth, twenty twenty-one, be brought back to refer to detail in present at the presentation to council. These items are recommended purchase following the city's review of its emergency response procedures. Uh, one of the items that was identified was the performance of controllable signs for traffic direction and messaging during emergency situations. To fill this need, three trailers inside are identified. After purchase, they will be available for normal use by the police and police departments for traffic control on as needed basis. Their, the regular use will ensure they are kept in proper operating condition for the regular use. And staff will be familiar with their operation. Each of these includes solar charging capability to maximize their ability to be used in multiple locations. The items to purchase under this approval were identified by the police department as being appropriate for traffic control and multiple uses for messaging. The total cost for the three signs, the trailers, and all the accompanying accessories is four, four thousand nine hundred forty-seven dollars. As these signs could also be used for traffic correction during incident festivals and events. The M U D C had previously set aside funds to reimburse the cities for on behalf of purchase amount, uh, which include consideration as follows, next meeting, the next day and evening meeting, the schedule for some intervention they want. And the city's news chief, Anthony Solomon, is here. Are there any questions specific to the planned use of these signs?
So the first trailer has a unit price of seventeen thousand, and it's, it's speed. Speed only, right?
No, the one that's at fifteen thousand is the one that has the, uh, it has the E P system in it, and also has the camera system, and also has the E P lights. The other two, uh, for, that you have that for twenty-seven, those are thirteen thousand feet, and those are the ones with the E P system. But the other one is for a higher, uh, you've got higher traffic areas, put those higher traffic areas. You get, uh, by the fact you get the alert, you get the radar alert, and this one, and this one as well. So that's why it's about three thousand outside.
Okay. So y'all, well, I'm just curious, you know, I may have mentioned this before, but they work for me. Y'all have data that says that this really does, like, cut the number of speeders down in an area when you just flash that?
Well, many people, when, when these trailers first came out, people thought they had cameras on, and they're snapping pictures up, which is not true, right? It was doing a good job of slowing people down. And what we've got, uh, what we've got now, on one oh five, some of the other streets, these signs are perfect for the, even when we put one down on the ten ninety-seven there, I come through there, and the only time I've noticed that, people were a bit slower than that. We also put an officer out there. So yes, these, these definitely are a job.
So are these all, all three of these, the, the, the good ones? Or is it one of the good ones and two of the okay ones?
No, no, not the ones that are okay. The other, the other comes a little bit more with, and that's high, uh, traffic areas.
So I'll just, we just go and spend money and get all three?
We didn't need all of them, high traffic areas. These other people put on streets, uh, such as one forty-nine, where traffic is not as high, and a few are messable. This one is high traffic areas, like one oh five, and also has the radar loop, and also has the camera on it, and also has the E P system.
I'm just trying to help you spend more money, that's all, I understand.
Oh, I understand.
Okay.
So, Richard, where does this come out of the budget?
Sorry?
Where does this come out of the budget?
Well, right now, the budget does have, you know, there is no budget line for this. It allows, the council is allowed to approve that, and then we will assign it to a police line item. At the end of every fiscal year, council does a reconciliation process where it amends the budget so that it matches what actually happened. And so it would, uh, that would be adjusted at that time. So it would be assigned to, there is a police category for signage. And that's one reason why this comes to the council's fork of the item, because there were not enough funds previously appropriated.
Right.
Like I say, since our last council meeting, I reached out to forty members of the, like, Kevin Lacy's county councilman. Forty members of that, of that page, twenty-three responded and sixteen were for it. So that's what, seventy-something percent? I, I, I'm for it. I think that we need to go ahead and spend the money now to get these things going. Because like, I think someone said the infrastructure needs to be worked on. Now, that's a big piece of it, so, um, I'm for it, too. I'm for it. What do you think, Joe?
Yeah.
I'd like to point out that the last time that I made a comment about only doing two cars instead of four cars, and Chief, I love you, and I love our police department, and this has nothing to do with not funding the police, because I would rather throw you fifty, a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars if it covers our police officers' healthcare and we can maintain our men in uniforms staying with our department than turning over and rotating. And I would rather throw money at that all day long before I throw money at this.
Actually, what you said was a hundred thousand, that would only happen to one car.
Yeah. I'm just saying, I just want you to hear me, and I tell you, I'm not a fan of this, but I do support our police officers.
Well, when we're talking about police officers, we're talking about supporting the community. Hopefully, what happens, when we have that snow song, after that song, how do you do in stores? And all of this place in the uniforms? And people ask me questions, "What are we gonna be met? Why did we have a sign here? Why did somebody have a register for that?" That's what these signs are for.
Good point.
And that keeps an officer out of harm's way, in some cases too, I mean.
Right. Yes.
I'd like to make the motion, make the motion to approve the purchase of the traffic control and messaging signs from all traffic solutions, full of the total price of forty-four thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars.
A second.
Motion has been moved, and second, that we are accept of. Motion has been moved a second, and we are accept the approval purchase of traffic control and messaging sign from all traffic solutions for the total price of 44,947,000. Motion's open for debate, minimum, open for discussion. On discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
The ayes have the motion to recommend approval for the traffic control and messaging sign from all traffic solutions for the total price of 44,947,000. Okay, now we have to our departmental reports. City administrator?
Thank you. Start the, with the other emergency items, we had discussion last meeting, related to generator community center. We're looking into this morning some grant opportunities that will work with not just the generator, but the additional work to that building. So we'll hope to bring that back to council, find the appropriate grants and have those that are the, move that in the right direction. I was asked last meeting, I promised for this meeting, I would have the schedule for how we'll approach, not just the workshop, but on vendor order titles. I put that in my report, I'll read it out loud here. Timeline for that is staff and the city attorney to complete work on draft ordinance by August 31st. City releases a public survey on these items to accept written comments at the meet of September 6th, and begin accepting written comments at the same time. Now, if any, any written comments that may be provided before that time will still be collected, will be kept, will be advertised at that point. So if anyone has turned in written comments prior to that, then will be kept in sync with the rest. I would like to just make sure that's clear. Planning hold the workshop between September 21st and 23rd. That's just flexible dates right now, we'll reach out to council in the next meet to try to find the date that is best for the city council members to be in attendance for that. We'll end acceptance of written comments the day following the workshop, so people who may come to the workshop will also provide written comments, and we'll take those through the next day. Those written comments will be used with staff and the city attorney, and provide a summary report to the city council on September 28th, and the staff and city council will complete revised draft ordinance prior to the October 12th city council meeting, or then the end of the city council. And so we will follow, we will follow that schedule, barring something completely upsetting the process, like a hurricane queen's two weeks behind, but I don't see that happening.
And for those of you who didn't write all that down, it is available on page 79 in the agenda packet, online at the city website, and that was the food truck ordinance that we're talking about.
Yeah, and if somebody, if they don't want to look that up, and they just want to phone us or email us, I'd be happy to email that out as well.
So to be clear, you're talking about written comments, you accept written comments. The workshop that we have, September 21st through 23rd, that will involve the public being able to openly discuss this ordinance, back and forth with council and the public.
Now, that's my understanding of what that is, what council wants that to be for.
That's what we want, okay, I just want to make sure it's not, if we're gonna submit written comments, then we'll read them, okay, great, thanks for coming, now we can decide what's happening.
Right. One of the points of accepting written comments is, there will probably be someone who wants to come who can't make that, because no matter what time you schedule it for, someone's going to be working somewhere. Or there might be people, maybe they come and have to leave, but, and that's why we'll accept comments through the next day. Or there might be just some people, maybe they just don't want to talk.
So question, got it, so question about that, why do we, why do we accept written comments before the city attorney and, and staff works on it, so you have, you know what I mean, so we have more of an, an idea of what the citizens are looking for, so that we're back and forth.
Everyone just wants to provide comments, they're coming to me, they're going to, they're going to days, Mr. President.
So they can, they can provide comments now, right?
But it's like that. We're not advertising accepting written comments, we're trying to put that in line with putting a survey out, and then, and written comments aren't limited to the survey, it could be anything anyone wants to submit.
When's the survey coming up?
Uh, week of September 6th.
So I'm advertising before now, if you wanted some written comments, go ahead. There we go, okay, got it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Move on. Previously, I mentioned the Dairy Rescue Plan Funds, those are, you know, that was the last announced federal program to help provide COVID-type-related funds. Our funds, because we're a smaller city, go through the Texas Department of Emergency Management, we're within, we need in and out of, we're, the city is new to accept, to get approximately, I think it was 337,000 dollars in two payments. But for last week, we've been told that first payment is in process. I can't give an accurate answer as to what in process means, but that's better of an answer than I've gotten for the last several months. Back in May, it was said these would be released in early November, December, June.
So it's in the mail?
So we are in late August, still trying to, like.
It's in the mail, Richard, I'm sure they've got it in the mail, right?
So basically, they've got you with the fund?
Yeah. Those, those funds, and we'll discuss this more at the workshop, because we have input into the next city budget. They do come with springs, that mean they can be, only can be spent in certain places. The primary method of that is for infrastructure, but we'll discuss those details at the workshop, but also when we get the money.
Yeah.
And the city's bookkeeper has instructed to segregate those funds, so we can document where the federal government, and we will have to document too, where they went and what they were ultimately spent on.
No pressure, Chris, infrastructure.
Also, this last month, I attended a meeting with the state attorney general's office on the state's opioid settlement, that you may have heard in news, and so it's resulted in all sorts of money going to various levels of government. The attorney general's office has here to be that the share that would come to the city of Montgomery is 1,884,000.
Well, that should cover it.
So I think that's one step early, that's better than the state of Montgomery.
Yeah.
Somehow it didn't quite seem to pan out to be the settlement that came to Montgomery.
How'd they determine that, anyway?
It was based largely on population, and also identified hotspot areas with opioid problems. I guess maybe, I guess considered that Montgomery is not historically a opioid hotspot.
I hate to see what everyone else is like.
Last item for the industrial report on Hoots Development Board is just a reminder that I slightly take vacation on October 15th through 25th. I believe the last month, I gave you a range, but not dates, and so that is, that plan. We have to develop a report, residential and construction are continuing to occur throughout the city. Primary residential construction areas are well-known by everyone right now, pulls from Town Creek, and so it's a Town Creek crossing. On the commercial end, on the east side, Canada Express, that building is moving forward, AutoZone recently opened, Wendy's was recently issued their permits through July 31st of this calendar year, 33 loans are completed, and more continuing to be completed. With regards to the GLO drainage project, right now, we are waiting to hear from them on two regards. One is the extension that was filed, we have a follow-up conversation, filed a follow-up letter with them today, so we can make sure they're getting exactly what they want for the extension request. And along with that is, we're waiting for their, them to approve the first phase of project work that we want to do. They have to file it, it's just way into their. Mobility with 149 internally, you may have seen activity there at that intersection, I don't have the timeline for when the actual construction work is coming through, but it's at least visible to people, that is, moving forward. With the 1097 speed and signal studies, those have been sent to TxDAS, as far as I know at this point, we don't have a return communication from them, other than the acknowledgement they received those, but that is in there in certain now. Any questions on this report that we have to drive to?
Has Dairy Queen ever asked or approached us about coming here?
Dairy Queen?
Dairy Queen, yeah.
I've not heard of any contacts regarding the Dairy Queen. Although I personally would enjoy.
I'm just saying, I'm a boss, you know?
The Dairy Queen and Willis told me that they are looking at the property at the corner of Emma's Way and 105, right there next to the high school.
Really?
But that has been a good couple of months, and I knew that there was, like, it hasn't been done yet, but I heard that from the Dairy Queen and Willis, and it was exciting.
They were something like that there, Dairy Queen would have a long line many times a day.
Oh, I'd be at the front of it.
Yes, sir.
Do we know an estimated timeline for Panda to open yet, or no?
No, it's just, it's still a little too far out, but there are, that's not the first time I've put that question, I'm sure people ask.
Yeah.
So I keep people waiting, that, including my wife and daughter, because that's one of the things that's true.
All right. Public work, Mr. Mike?
David, Mayor, Procton, and Council. As usual, I'll just hit some highlights through the report. On the water side, we replaced an air leak valve on Buffalo Springs Bridge water line, completed five workers for water leaks. The wastewater side, we repaired Mandeville links, ring and lid and ring on a pleather, and raised the Mandeville that was covered up on, at 916 College. On the streets and drains, we replaced several faded reserve parking signs at the park facilities, and repaired two puddles. On the building facility, vehicle equipment maintenance line, we replaced the damaged sink in the community center, women's restroom, which I wanted to hit on that, because I know you, you were, you'd expressed some concern on making sure we looked at facilities before events. I want to let you know, we do, every Monday, Wednesday, Friday, the facilities are cleaned, and before we have an event, we try to get them late Friday afternoons, but it appeared to us that somebody had actually jumped on the sink or something, it broke it off the wall later.
Yeah.
And that was Saturday evening, so it wasn't, one of my guys did catch it between, about zero Saturdays. But we do try to make sure that the facilities are checked before any kind of events.
Thanks.
We adjusted some brakes on one of our trailers. On the park side, we repaired sidewalk lighting at Cedar Break Park and completed 14 workers for maintenance park issues. Fernland Davis reported 654 visitors and provided 55 tours. And we attended a meeting with MEDC Events Coordinator and the Events Committee meeting, and we hosted the 2021 Water Party at the Community Center for the. Any questions?
Was one of your leaks, the one at Heritage House?
Well, no, so this is the report from July.
Okay. Did you get the message about the?
I did, we, so we, we have actually addressed that spot before, and what we found, this is about a year ago, we got, there was actually a phone conduit in there that built a water pump, and that's the point that it comes out. We actually went over today and looked at it again, because we noticed that it's still wet, it hasn't rained in a while.
Yeah.
It's a rainwater, so we called, located in on it, we're actually going to go ahead and dig it up again when the locates are good. Just to re-verify, the water line actually sits several feet behind that spot, it's like, I would say 10 to 15 feet.
Yeah.
So there's not a water line right there, but we know for a fact that there's some type of conduit there that, when it, typically when it rains, it comes down that hill, and that's the point that it comes out.
Well, whatever.
Which is not uncommon to happen.
Yeah, whatever's coming up out of there, it's been coming up enough that there's, like, algae on the asphalt that it's been pouring so long.
Well, when we assessed it a week ago, it was, it was coming out probably three times as much as it was today, so it slowed down, which sometimes chasing a water leak is very hard, but it doesn't appear to be a water leak, but we are going to go ahead and dig it up again, and it just, we put eyes on it, that it's coming out of the conduit, then we know what it is.
Thanks.
There you go.
All right.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right, we have, well, you should report, Chief.
David, Mayor, Procton, and Council. Again, you have to report, do you have any questions? I only have one thing I'd like to comment on, is that, on the CERT team. As part of our emergency management that we went through, to look to do things, to have people in positions next time we have to work, that was one of the things, was the CERT team. In Montgomery here, they've been trying to get a CERT team, even a CERT class for, for about the last two years since 2019. So we've got, we've had the first one, in our private section, we've got about 15 of our citizens out, just that are well-trained now, disaster, it's going to be great for the city on the next disaster. Any questions, David?
I've heard great things about CERT class, so.
You're good.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, we have now the fourth report.
We think Mayor, Procton, and Council have reported front of you for the month of July because of 33,874,84 cents in revenue, and the total amount of taxing for 163. And for the upcoming months, the city of Montgomery will be anticipating in the fall warrant resolution with the collections department, so that's going to be going out trying to collect 100,000 warrants. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Utility report.
This is a utility report, to a couple of my own items. Revenue by 15,690 dollars for the center stores in Montgomery County, payment, like, who cares, that reimbursement. Those, I guess originally in process, it started back in November. The, the total under all ball permits was 12,961 dollars, that represents 27 apartments throughout the month there. And if you look on the, the third page there, you see the city's water use at parks as increased significantly as we go into drier, hotter periods, which is normal, it still, it still was not as much in July as, as it had been in some summers. If it rains soon, it might be higher for this report.
I think it's coming.
But it, right now, it's, I mean, literally, it's all days of summer, you know, it's kind of what you expect in a hot, hot year.
All right, thanks. Water operations report.
David, Mayor, Procton, and Council. I think a July operation report, you'll catch three from here, just the third page. I want to highlight all two others. The second one down, we have a higher hydrant that will be bound to not be operating correctly, so we have to live back and get it repaired. That was actually on the end of Baja Street, we didn't have the address listed here, but we're going to get that back up and going. And then, on addition to, we did have a call-out for a VFD failure, and having to replace the variable frequency drive on the, that was a pump, so. Other than that, we, you know, we have a number of our power issues, which we haven't had a resolution from energy. Apparently, they found a hole that would start the team over during wind events, and so they've made a repair to that. So we actually haven't had any power call-outs since, I believe it was the 18th of last month.
Awesome. Was that after they repaired that though?
Yes, that, that was after.
Was that after they repaired it?
Mike, was it on the sixth? There's something that been repaired? I don't recall the exact date.
That mayor may not have been it, basically, I'm saying to you.
Yeah, well, yeah, we, I mean, we've had the, the long range of the power issues, so.
Right, okay.
After they repaired that, we were literally at a meeting with the chief here.
That's right.
And the power went out during that meeting, when they're ready, they told us that they made those fixes. What happened to that was the car ran into a pole.
Yeah.
But I think since that car ran into a pole, we've not had a problem.
Got it.
On page four, the other effluent train, flow for the month of June, its period was 596,11,000 gallons. Day peak flow is July, only at 443,000 gallons, and your daily average flows 187,000 gallons, but you have 47%. Page five is your, your effluent monitor report, all sample water in compliance for July, and the report is total of six and a quarter inches of rain in the plants. Page six is your water report, we pumped a total of 10,538,000, at flushing of 101,000, and a sold amount of 9,803,000, bringing to 94% accountability. And bottom right is your total connection count, based on your back-to-back system. Page seven, eight supplemental charges with 13 mark to shoot. In addition to that, highlight, we did install the hand express cap, so they're all set to be out there.
Awesome.
But, other than that, that's all I have, unless you have any questions?
Probably just an easy one for me, you're going from, like, from page four, we're at 97%. I mean, we, as far as accountability percentage, is that kind of the normal range, between 90 and 95%? Is that where it's at?
Yeah, typically, the good range is year by year to see 93, 94 to 100%. Can fluctuate due to leaks or flushing, the activities going on in the city.
I'm sure that hydrant leak had a lot to do with the drop in the accountability.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I find it, is that?
All right, good evening, Mayor, Lieutenant, and Council. Just go over some highlights of the financial report in front of you. Page number three, your account balances for your operating, for your operating general fund, you have a total just under seven months reserved in there. And then page four for your MEDC, you have just over two years reserved, and for your utility fund, eleven months reserved. Next couple pages, your cash flow, your all your receipts and disbursements, and your receipt that we received for the month of July, your sales tax, about two hundred and eighty-eight thousand eight seventy-nine. And then one, and then a couple of disbursements to point out, Montgomery County election administrator, there was, there were two, since there were two elections this fiscal year, that's the reason why there are two other bills that want that one's a little bit higher for this fiscal year. Moving along, page number twelve, your report, your budget. Five hundred and two thousand, five hundred and fifty thousand for sales tax to your, I think, six hundred and fifty-nine of it going into your general fund, going into your MEDC. I got the August numbers from online and it is four hundred and sixty-six thousand that we received, which is probably the highest that I've seen since being here, so really good stuff there. You were thirty-eight percent over on your revenues for the month of July and currently twelve percent total of revenues for fiscal year, ten months complete. And then for your, for your expenditures, a little bit over expenditures, twelve percent over, and ninety-three percent to for your total expended expenses for the fiscal year.
I think you might have said a number that's concerning, Julie.
Sorry, I had a really bad, I smiled in the background, I couldn't make it go away. I apologize.
I'm sure you can go over the second.
So sorry.
Where'd you say?
And then just, and then just a couple of things to point out. On page twenty-nine and thirty, I know those are still the same total for the grants, but I did get confirmation from your engineer that those projects were leased on your next month's report. They are, those other funds were transferred back to your general fund, so there's going to be ten dollars left on both accounts, which is one. We can keep those open for any future grants that may come in, such as the GLO that's coming up. Then I believe we can track those funds whenever they do into POS codes. And then the, and then the second thing is.
Appreciate it.
And then the second thing is that your bond payments on the last page are coming up soon, and we're going to be able to pay this payment this week. That's all I have to show.
Thank you, Evan.
Thank you.
Okay, presenting the sales tax report, the same number you continue to have on the table before.
Yes, good evening, Council. My name is Catherine Wither. I am the President, Secretary of Treasure for Sales Revenue, your sales tax tracking. This is Derek Michael. He is one of my consultants with SRI. He is the coordinator for your jurisdiction, and we have a report this evening for you. Also, just to let everybody know, Derek and I are going to be out in the area pretty soon, and we noticed that there were some things that need to be put on the report, so we'll be taking care of that shortly. But when you turn this over to Derek, he's going to give you a short, everybody has one, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, great.
All right, you can cast him out, Derek Michael with SRI. If I can, could you guys flip past the first page there? The first page will be your review of all your monthly reports provided. We have five thousand three hundred and thirty-nine active sales tax gears on your report, confidential report. So far in this August of 2021, you received two thousand one hundred and ninety-four sales tax gears, and so that would be an increase for over your August 2020 to nine twenty-six percent. And so far, for the twelfth month, you have an average of two thousand and thirty-nine times gears for your guys' allocations. The next page will be the top twenty-five of the twelve months of August to August. And so your sales tax receipts for the calendar year so far, we have two million six hundred and ninety-two thousand six hundred and forty-sixty-four. As I said, the average of two thousand and thirty-nine. So for your February of 2021, it's going to be your highest sales tax gears of two thousand two hundred and seventy-seven. And the next these listed will be the top five, our top twenty-five for the year. And you notice to the right will be your NASCS codes, which are the definitions of what type of business it is, whether it's in the grocery store or home or hardware store, something like that. And I included the index at the end of the interview report, so you guys can have a look.
Is there any, I'm sorry, is there a legend that shows, you know, like, you look at something, you can't remember the, AZIP Enterprises, the other side?
Yes, sir, that the very end of this report will be the index for the NASCS.
Okay, thank you.
So then I will insert it here.
Cool.
Okay, flipping past that will be the sales tax files from top twenty-five for August. And so your Kroger, McCoys, and Maxxal are your top three. Flipping past that will be comparison of August to July of 2021. And then that will be your quarterly versus the non-quarterly files are on your guys' confidential reports. You guys will see an allocation breakdown for those. And so the next page after that will be your nexus. And so you have ninety-seven percent of your sales tax receipts are received from providers that are sales tax, finance be bound to, but they don't have any simple addresses within there. And so actually, that would be, that would be contributing sales tax in the seventy-five was actually have a physical address here, and then the remaining two thousand one hundred and nineteen will be services, like, and so those will be your nexus numbers. So far, the City of Montgomery received thirty-five million nine hundred and sixty-four thousand six hundred and fifty dollars and forty-nine cents from July one, nineteen ninety-five. And our August 2021 allocations that we received, you guys, is four hundred and sixty-six thousand three oh five sixty-one. The next page over will be comparison for your August of 2021 to 2020. And so that four sixty-six, three oh five sixty-one for 2021 will be twenty-four percent increase over your August of 2020. And then so for what we have for your fiscal year, we have three million five hundred and sixty-six thousand eight hundred and sixty-three forty-two. And our files, we have a one point five million dollar budget, and you guys are at two hundred and thirty percent, you guys, as a given for your revenue. And so you have once after that will just be your fiscal years for 2019 and 2020. And that total allocations from 2012 to present is twenty-one million eight hundred and eighty-two thousand five hundred and five minus seven. And at the bottom will be the calendar year breakdown for your allocations by needs and means for your average annual payments. And so your average payment for so far in 2021 was three hundred and thirty-six, five seventy-six, eight three. And last year, you guys' allocation was two hundred and sixty-three thousand five hundred and forty, that's a considerable increase in that. And so the next pages will be your, will be your RAPs. And so the monthly allocations for the demo way back to 2015. The page after that, RAP, after that will be your month-to-month variance, and that will just be from April to May and so forth within the year. And so you're at sixty-one percent over your guys' July payment. And the next one after that will be your previous year, and as I said before, you're twenty-four percent over your previous August. And then the following page after that will be your yearly allocations, as well as your yearly variance and RAP one. And then the page after that will be your NASCS index and breakdown of everything, everything you've seen in there, that will be a code that goes back there for vegetables, construction, also vehicle equipment. So if you guys have any questions or concerns, that's all I have for you guys right now. And as I said, we're going to go out there and we're going to try our size, because definitely want to see if the Panda Express, Panda Express contributes a lot of sales tax to it, there's no Panda Express around. And so with the afternoon, your twenties, I believe, is another one, so you guys.
And that dairy queen by the high schools would be fantastic.
I know, I agree.
Right down my street.
Would be fantastic.
You mentioned you noticed some things that were missing. I'm sorry.
Okay. Yeah, it's pretty, out here is probably a two-day tour, so they will schedule that back to Matt or toward the end.
I'm sorry, is that what you were just going to ask me, which are the things that you thought were missing off the report?
Okay, just so we can converse on, I do get to review with them, like, the total list, and so just either items that we think may be miscorrected or items that they maybe thought, maybe that company thinks it's doing its job right, but they, but through one reason or another, they've misreported the city, maybe it's just they're reporting from a different set of, that's part of the services I do is to, is to go out and then see what's here to verify it's the right.
Just a question, limited service restaurant versus full service, that drive-through or what versus sit-down? How do you assess?
It's more like a deli versus a full restaurant with bars and.
Okay.
So.
There's two or three of those in the top five consistently and everything.
Is there any way to get an allocation, like, on page five, you have an annual allocation of sales tax by location? Is there a way to get an annual allocation of sales tax by dollar amounts? Like, I like to see of the three percent that are inside the city limits, what dollar amount are they generating in comparison to the ninety-seven percent that aren't? Because my gut says that their number is.
That should be, I think, included in your confidential.
And I'll be sending that out to you tomorrow.
Perfect.
There's a tricky way to get it confused with this because being a confidential report, if it introduces the public, the information is no longer confidential.
Gotcha. I just admit, because Kroger and McCoys are constantly at the top, and then I was like, well, I wonder what money, you know?
You'll be able to see that on the confidential report, we're just, we're sending that in on the form.
Are you going to do a breakdown of this, or your top investment?
I think you forgot confusing me. Appreciate it very much.
Kevin, I think AZIP is Pizza Shack.
Oh, okay, cool. Oh, confused, Pizza Shack.
What?
Thanks, guys. Good job.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Still full from that.
Right, the number one, sorry, I made it one sixty-seven, your package, our report. First time on here is the downtown water collection project. The project is wrapping up, they're in final testing connections as we speak, so we expect that they'll be substantially in the next thirty days, that's how we put it in service. We did have gas for this month, and they're, as in July, they're about eighty-six percent complete, and so there's a question for that now. Portlet number three, that company will be mobilized about Saturday night now. They're going to start preliminary work, but the schedule just reminded the ground source tank, the small ones, the back dishes being replaced. That work won't happen until closer October, once it's cooler, so we have, sorry, work in. Your GLO projects are listed, so your Andrew Benjamin improvements are underway. Your Mark Luther King Drive, Digital Raid, and Santris, your recap project, we did receive plans yesterday from another car, so we're reviewing those. And then water line number three, Duraire project, that will be started up here pretty soon. The speed studies that Richard mentioned earlier on 1097, that was revised to forty-five miles an hour, they talked about the last meeting, and so that was submitted to Tech Dog, as well as the traffic signal war analysis for 1097 in Buffalo Springs. Not on here, it was asked last time, was the timeline of 1097 improvements? That question was asked as well, we kept all 1097 together, so we'll be having the follow-up call about that day next month, at this meeting. Developments are listed. Wendy's has been talking about the Chops Montgomery Access Drive, those plans were approved. What that is, is from Starbucks to Buffalo Springs, behind the Panda Express, they're going to complete that road, so now you can get in and out of the development, they go from Buffalo Springs all the way across, which would be good. Plating is listed, a couple of mining plats this month that were signed. Town three crossing section one, ongoing construction, as you can see. Those are town three, section three, one-year warranty items. We did a reinspection on the nineteenth, so last Thursday, there's still ample items that need to be addressed. They did, they fixed the pavement and it's better, but it doesn't look best. And then around the corner, where they had ried down the corner, toward the drain.
Yeah.
It looks like they stopped about sixteen each.
It's awful. That's my driveway, by the way.
Right. We were, it's an ongoing discussion, and we'll be, that's not yet complete.
They just fixed the water so it all stays at the end of my driveway.
Right.
You have a big lifted truck. What does it matter if the water pumps there can then? I mean, come on.
Keep it clean, you don't get muds in there washing the floor.
And the last thing I have, camera track development, no new update, talk of that developer the last couple of weeks. They were, we have, getting their plans ready and need to sit back down in the city, but we haven't heard back from them.
Have you heard any kind of change of their development plans with their construction costs changing so much?
I haven't heard anything official. You know, the latest we know, the feasibility study, we haven't heard if it responds on a lot of changes, if they've added additional property, we haven't, haven't heard. So I had a conversation with them last week, and they're, the attorney, supposed to be reached out to set up a regroup meeting. I have not, I wasn't possibly listening, so I've not heard back. There's a lot going on in and around that project. Last page, two minutes of reviews, ongoing. The African Red Tech Dog project, that will begin, just reminded that's a 2026 funding. Every now and then we get a four-year B emails from Tech Dog, and it goes quiet, so we'll continue to follow that. The pipeline for the turn lane at one oh five, one forty-nine is supposed to complete in October, for that start. And last time, the city prepared transition. We're still going through, slowly but clearly, as things come up with the progress and bearing our money to less things that we still need, but we're, so far, we're not holding up any work that you're able to do then.
The right turn lane, that's about a month ahead of what they originally thought, right?
Turn lane, so they originally started this September starting, they started a little early, but they're still, I think, the overall timeline is still right on it. And Catherine Michael, the question things are.
It's almost comical that it's taken twenty years to get a right turn lane, and it's going to take less than sixty days to complete.
I know.
So I don't mean to, I'm just like.
I think it was the first thing that I was involved with, the first things I was involved with the city in 2017 was test operating and just always there.
Chris, the problems on the hills of Town Creek, water issues and pressure was the main deal, and Mike's done a good job, you know, keeping us up on that. So when we get to a hundred percent, are we confident that that's going to handle, you know, a hundred percent completion of the project, the water project out to the west, are we going to be confident?
So, so right now, how it's currently, how the left pipe, what is the water line, the water plant three, 1097, that releases toward the city water, when it got in, it went from a twelve-inch pipe to a six-inch pipe.
Okay.
And that six-inch pipe then went through the city of town all the way to Cedar Ray Park. So now this pipe is taking it from six inch to twelve inch, connecting those two, so now we have a twelve-inch pipe that goes all the way through to that pot and then middle of the city.
Okay, so, and also in anticipation of thirty more in phase four, we should be good to go in the near future?
It should, and, you know, future phases, and I know this is talk about, you know, additional, there's also the additional development, there's a lot of opportunity, but that's where we start getting into the timeline of, is it the water line around the north loop that makes the most sense? Is it the water plant on the side that we own on that side of town? Does that make the most sense? Because, you know, the biggest drivers, and we'll talk about this in the budget workshop as well, is, you know, we have a lot of capacity, but it's now a physical distance between the plant and where we're going, and what is most cost-effective, what is the short of the distance by a cranky bumper, park the loop, or else build a plant on this side of town, still complete the loop in the future, and now we can produce from both sides, so. Thirty more homes, we should be good. Any future development, I'll be definitely looking at in a little detail as they go out there, kind of like we do with the camera track, you know, come back to the bottom and see what's going to be needed to provide service at times with our issues.
So we'll have a better feeling in this budget workshop and through the process as to how, how quickly we might be getting going for the water to the camera project and the big enchilada, the water tower and all that.
Right. Yes, we'll go over that part today, but let's have the budget for this year and have anticipation for some of those. Definitely, when we finally get to sit down with camera, update that pipeline and lay those out, that's one of the bigger, biggest drivers that's on the books right now are those that are going to be knowing when they're going to develop and how these improvements that you're going forward stay up.
So how big of a priority do you put on those lights that we've been talking about?
The stop signs?
Well, where I had trouble getting out of today. I had to change on, trying to get out on Buffalo Springs, you know, it's tough there. So I'm, you know, before, my thinking was is that we're not quite there yet. We anticipate being there with one hundred and ninety-nine homes getting built, especially. So I'm holding off on that, but how do you see those two traffic lights, one more important than the other? How urgent do you feel like that is needing?
So I believe ongoing, so we're talking about the spring, the 1097, Buffalo Springs, the spot, ongoing. Ongoing is a signal war analysis for one oh five and Buffalo Springs. And then we already have the one completed at ten ninety-seven. So I think what needs, you know, part of what we'll discuss Thursday is, you know, the cost of that and how, where that gets more, and that's money with budget. And use some of the care funds for some of your other water, sewer reconstruction improvements. But we'll kind of dive into those details on Thursday, and we can continue to report on that.
Is there a way to mitigate a light at Buffalo Springs and one oh five? If we just simply ask the Kroger development to, or we as a city put in a cut through of a road from Buffalo Springs to Kroger?
So on that, I've asked the developer, so lots of development, which is developed for, or one of the developments on that site. I had a conversation with him a few weeks ago, and they have plans for a development that's going to be on that corner. And part of that is they will complete that driveway right there where it just stops. And so you can get behind that development from Buffalo Springs. And I believe the timeline of that was first of next year. What I don't know was, is that first next year to start with the process or first next year to start with construction? We haven't seen any allocations thus far, so I believe we'll leave it to start with the process. But it's on his radar, I think, and that. So it sounds like when the next development of that shopping center goes, they'll complete that connection to now you can get from Kroger to Buffalo Springs.
And then in turn, you could get to twenty-eight fifty-four or the Lone Star Parkway to go out to a stoplight instead of.
That's good. To get the express.
Kind of the same.
Yeah.
That's the shops, or the, that's the building.
Yes.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we accept the departmental reports as presented.
Second.
Motion made that we accept departmental reports as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So was opposed. That we accept the departmental reports as presented. We don't have any, I have at this time, it's like David's session. We have counsel in court.
I have one quick thing. Just want to mention for everyone here and across the city, obviously, in case you're not aware, Kelvin Ironsworth, owner of your mom's barbecue, is going through a pretty, pretty big fight for his life right now with various stages of cancer, his liver and colon. I got the chance to see him on Sunday at the big ice cream thing downtown. And I can tell you, his spirits are definitely up, visually seeing him and speaking to him. He definitely needs our prayers, big time. So I just want to ask everyone to kind of keep Kelvin in your hearts and pray for him, he really needs it. There's also GoFundMe out there set up for Kelvin to help out with some of the expenses of what he's going through. And so I've shared that a few times. So if you happen to come by it and have five dollars or something you'd like to send over to help, that'd be appreciated. Because as sick as he was on Sunday, he insisted that his friend drive him around downtown Montgomery, you know, the historic district, so he can see his friends, as he said. You know, so I think that says a lot to the man, his character, and how much he loves this town, how much he's done for us. Just knowing he has to, so get out there and see us, I think that's pretty phenomenal. So just want to keep Kelvin in our thoughts, that's all.
Richard, can I clarify the, our Commissioner Walker has repaved Spring Branch or Old Plantersville from one oh five by the high school and is working on the second half south of the railroad tracks. But isn't north of the railroad tracks inside the city limits? No, first says no, he shook his head. Okay, so are we, do we know a timeline? He's going to go back and actually paint the lines on the road? Because it's not striped?
I do not, but we can definitely, but I know Mike was talking to them when they first started on their timeline, but we can reach out. But yeah, so city limits, stops, high schools included, some of the property that the east side of the road is included, but the actual road itself is not.
It's not. I'm thrilled that the road's being repaved, it needed to be repaved, that's not the issue. My issue was that he consistently was shutting down all traffic in both directions. And when I called him, he said, that's not happening. And I said, well, I finally had to use the fact that I was on council and say, I apologize, but next time I'll take a picture, because I felt like I was just constantly being called a liar. So I just had huge issues with that road being completely shut down in both directions. It doesn't allow nine-one-one traffic through, and it impedes all nine-one-one traffic to the high school. So I'm glad that the front half is done. I just hope that he's going to come repave it, not during school hours, or not re-stripe it, sorry.
Yeah, we'll.
And then there were issues of furniture being dumped on Old Plantersville, which I noticed have been picked up. But I don't know if that was Commissioner Walker. And one of the ag kids, I'm guessing their lamb died because they dumped that in Mr. Cameron's back driveway back there as well. So there's a lot going on on Old Plantersville in the last couple of weeks.
Interesting.
Thank you. You know, we can see with PD and, or keep a closer eye on some of that.
There was a mattress and a couch dumped back there, but I'm guessing since Mr. Walker's crews were out there, they went and picked it up. But the lamb, the vultures have taken pretty good care of right now.
Good reason for optimism that we, at this point, have three months, well over four hundred thousand in tax, right in that four hundred fifty-four, sixty. And you go back, there's only two, two months and seven years prior that you ever hit anywhere really close to that. So that's reason for what we call cautious optimism moving forward because of the price of everything. And we've already noted that every decision we make now is with the understanding it's going to cost more by the time you get it built. And so all of that is relative, but I see a lot of optimism for us.
Would you move to adjourn?
Second.
Question to adjourn, although you please say aye.
Aye.
As happy.
Thank you, everybody.